All right. Four and a half hours still work. Can't wait.
What's that?
Four and a half, four hours left in the work. That's why I was texting you. I was already awake.
I'm going to bed at 5:00 AM.
These shoes suck. Do you need me to hold your hand?
Okay, our ten motion to go back into the session. Jeremy makes the motion. Give me a second. Second by Carol. Roll call, please.
Mark Bennett. Teresa Bain.
I'm here.
Cody Brans.
Here.
Tim Brown.
Yes.
Carol Cole.
Here.
Charles Davis.
Here.
Julie Edwards.
Here.
Martha Fernheber.
Here.
Matt Kessler.
Here.
Annette Martin.
Here.
Tad Mayhaw.
Here.
Keith McCormick.
Here.
Tim Morse.
Here.
Lori Nelson.
Yes.
David Ogden.
Yes.
Bobby Orman.
Here.
Sunny Ross.
Yes.
Mitchell Shep.
Yep.
Brett Wallace.
Here.
Jeremy Williams.
Yes.
Okay, item four on the agenda is discussion and vote on approval of resolution for Shelby County Dive Team. Do I have a motion? Motion by Sunny. Seconded by Julie. Discussion.
Making motion for amendments.
Okay. What's the motion for amendment?
Motion for amendments for the resolution. For the Shelby County Dive Team are to keep intact paragraphs one through six. Excuse me, strike that, one through seven. An amendment to... Pardon my time here. Amendment to paragraph eight amend to state be a further result that this resolution extends the current dive team command structure and the current SOPs will remain in effect accepting the clause to referring to the charge of any fee for services both for sixty days and to strike the final two paragraphs of this resolution.
Seconded by Sunny.
There's a paragraph missing, number nine. The last paragraph on page one.
It is to remain.
It's to remain.
So would you like me to read that in full? You want me to read it in full?
So, just so I have this job down. The amendment is to retain the current structure.
Kurt, do you want the exact language again?
Yes, please. A little slower.
Sure. Be a further result that this resolution extends the current dive team command structure and the current SOPs will remain in effect accepting the clause referring to the charging of any fee for services both for sixty days and to strike the final two paragraphs of this resolution. Which, that doesn't go in that amendment, sorry.
So I will read that as amended, or the proposed amended? Yes, please.
Okay Bobby, before you read that, can I say something?
I just want everybody to listen real close. Listen.
Convenient, I need a... Do you have a number to that, right?
I have a number, but I have...
Is it train horn passing? So the resolution reads as follows. Whereas in order to provide more effective emergency services to citizens and visitors of Shelby County waterways, and whereas it is desirable that Shelby County have available trained scuba diving services for surface and underwater rescue, search and recovery, and whereas the Shelby County Board desires to form a volunteer team that is thoroughly trained, equipped, and ready to provide such services, and whereas I-50 ILCS 755, known as the Water Rescue Act, authorizes county units of government to authorize, fund, and support such water rescue recovery departments within their jurisdiction for the purposes of surface and underwater rescue and recovery. Now, therefore, it be resolved by members of the Shelby County Board and that the Shelby County Dive Rescue Team is hereby established. Be a further result that this Shelby County Dive Rescue Team be placed under the oversight of the duly appointed members of the Shelby County Board's Public Safety Committee. Be a further result that the Shelby County Public Safety Committee, acting as oversight regulatory committee, will ensure compliance with all policies and procedures governing the Shelby County Dive Rescue Team as passed by the full county board. That's where we stop, correct?
Yes, sir.
So that's up to paragraph seven. Paragraph eight then is the amendment to this resolution that extends current dive structure of the sixty days and accepts the clause to charging fees of both, or for sixty days, and the last two paragraphs. Seven, eight, nine. The last two paragraphs to be struck.
And then there is a paragraph nine.
Sorry, then the very last paragraph stays intact?
Yeah, number nine.
Just number nine. The number nine. I see, denote here. Be a further result that Shelby County Dive Rescue Team Commander shall create and coordinate training exercises and standards congruent with Emergency Response Diving International Standards. The Shelby County Dive Rescue Team Commander shall ensure team members are current on such training standards and is responsible for maintaining such records that are to be reported in that minimum semiannually to the Public Safety Committee for review.
And then the last sentence would be approved and adopted.
And then, of course, the adoption, recognition, approved and adopted at the special meeting of the Shelby County Board, yeah, Shelby County Board, Shelby County, State of Illinois on this day of twenty, and then the signature. Any discussion on what I just read?
Do you have a second? Do I have a second?
A second, did it?
Sunny, second. Any further discussion?
I hope that what he just read is enough that we keep our guys working and that they can go back to work, is what I hope. I hope you'll think about it, and I know how I have to vote, but I hope this is enough.
We all hope it's enough.
Yes.
Any other, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the amendment to the resolution?
Let's do a five-roll call. Okay?
This is the amendment to the resolution, which is simply the simple phrase that Tad added of the the extension of the current dive structure and to...
Command structure and remove last two paragraphs.
Yes.
Bobby. So this allows these guys to go back to work today, tonight, tomorrow?
Yes.
That's correct. So this is a vote on the amendment. All in favor, say roll call, please.
Okay. Teresa Bain.
Yes.
Cody Brans.
Yes.
Tim Brown.
Yes.
Carol Cole.
Yes.
Charles Davis.
Yes.
Julie Edwards.
Yes.
Martha Fernheber.
Yes.
Matt Kessler.
Yes.
Annette Martin.
Yes.
Tad Mayhaw.
Yes.
Keith McCormick.
Yes.
Tim Morse.
Yes.
Lori Nelson.
Yes.
David Ogden.
Yes.
Bobby Orman.
Yes.
Sunny Ross.
Yes.
Mitchell Shep.
Yes.
Brett Wallace.
Yes.
Jeremy Williams.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
So the vote on the amendment passes. Now we'll go back to the motion. In the discussion of the amendment, I read the resolution with the addition of the amendment. So, all in favor, this is a vote to pass the resolution as amended. Roll call, please.
Teresa Bain.
Yes.
Cody Brans.
Yes.
Tim Brown.
Yes.
Carol Cole.
Yes.
Charles Davis.
Yes.
Julie Edwards.
Yes.
Martha Fernheber.
Yes.
Matt Kessler.
Yes.
Annette Martin.
Yes.
Tad Mayhaw.
Yes.
Keith McCormick.
Yes.
Tim Morse.
Yes.
Lori Nelson.
Yes.
David Ogden.
Yes.
Bobby Orman.
Yes.
Sunny Ross.
Yes.
Mitchell Shep.
Yes.
Brett Wallace.
Yes.
Jeremy Williams.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Motion carries. So now I'd like to open up the floor to public body comment. Public body comment? Chairman.
Clint Snyder, taxpayer. I want to thank you all for what you've come together as a team and put together tonight. It's been a long fight. I, myself, feel that it could have been very, all this could have been very avoidant. In the future, this is how business should be done. The other question I do have from the legislation meeting, and I'm not looking for an outburst comment from our state's attorney, is he made it known, it's publicly known, that somebody entered that dive team and rifled through their equipment. Can anybody answer, clear the air for the public? On who and why? Myself, as a taxpayer, think it was unlawfully done. I done my due diligence this week, trying to find what was told. Is there was no structure, whether it's legal or not? Can't answer that. I did find where current past board members did sign that structure. It was handed to Mr. Williams for you guys to review. That's all I have.
Public body comment?
I would like an answer if it's available.
I don't think there's one available at the moment.
I just want to amplify what, Teresa Bain, I just want to amplify what Clint said. Thanks for resolving this. Thanks for working together. Thanks for serving the community. That's it.
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify my understanding, I know, and I was in the hallway here where I couldn't hear really well. There's some limitation on that in reference to sixty days. I just wonder if you could clarify what that references?
That timeframe gives the dive team and the committees and the board time to get properly, work together and get structured. That's really the timeframe, is to get the two melted together.
Is it contemplated that there will be a further discussion of that issue and a further resolution sometime after that sixty day period has passed?
Well, within that sixty day period.
Within it, all right, before it expires. And that's, I just want to clarify, this is a stopgap measure, which we think is a positive development, but if it's a stopgap measure, there'll be more issues to be dealt with between now and the next sixty days?
Yes, yeah. The SOPs, SOGs, the structure, just everything that goes into the government entity. Public body comment? Sir?
Please, would you reread paragraph nine? I believe you just deleted.
Paragraph nine is the...
Do you think he wants to delete paragraphs?
Delete the paragraphs? Is that what you're looking for? If I'm reading this correctly. Be a further result in the event of Shelby County Dive Rescue Team Commander fails to comply with requirements established above the chair... That was all draft version. This is all struck, yeah. Yeah, it was struck, but it was in the committee meeting, was it correct? Okay, so that was discussed in the committee meeting. So what was struck? Was in the event of the Shelby County Dive Rescue Team Commander fails to comply with requirements as above, the chair and the public safety committee has the power to hear the commander, subject to the full review of the full Shelby County Board on the application for separate review of the commander, or from the commander. The commander shall five days, five business days, to apply other items to the full board for review as such suspension. The next paragraph is, in case of an emergency, the public safety chair has the full power to suspend operation of Shelby County Dive Team to ensure the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of Shelby County, as well as the health, safety, and welfare of the members of the Shelby County Dive Rescue Team. Those are the two struck paragraphs. Public body comment? Sir?
My name is Josh Summers. I am with the US Army Corps of Engineers at Lake Shelbyville. I'm here not speaking for or on behalf, on behalf of the Department of Defense. I'm just here speaking on behalf as the operations manager at Lake Shelbyville, and just wanted to speak a little bit about the operations of the lake specific to, you know, the dive team. We have eleven thousand acres of water, twenty-four thousand acres of land. We have seven campgrounds, two thousand campsites, sixty to seventy outlined parking lots and hunting and fishing areas. We have twenty-five to thirty fishing ponds on the project. We have a visitation of three to four million people annually. I believe we all understand the backbone and the impact that the lake provides to the communities surrounding the lake and throughout this part of Illinois. I say that because it's not the Corps of Engineers doing this. It's all of the partners, all of the stakeholders, approximately eighty that I work with on a routine basis. People come to this area because of the lake, because of what Shelby County has to offer. Businesses come to Lake Shelbyville area because there's the three to four million visitors and what the county is able to offer. We have factories within Shelby County that have made multimillion dollar investments to this area and publicly have stated it's because of the lifestyle and the community surrounding the lake. The lake is what the lake is because of all the stakeholders and partners we have. One of our longest standing partnerships is with Shelby County. For that, I'm grateful. You all do a tremendous job. There's a lot going on, but yet we all come together and do the right thing. And I want to extend my appreciation for making sure we have a viable dive team. The dive team, I get to see the inner workings of it. I know what they do. I know how valuable that is to us. When we have an emergency, no matter if it's on land or on water, that individual may be in the water at some point. The Shelby County Dive Team is always there. The investment that the county has made up to date is tremendous. It's a small fraction money-wise for what this group is doing. When we have an incident, everyone I've been involved in over the last ten years, the Shelby County Dive Team is the one that makes the recovery. They are the volunteers out there making that recovery. And if you have never been in on an incident like that, you're lucky. It's not easy. These volunteer organizations that make Lake Shelbyville what it is, they put hundreds and hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of hours into what they do for our community. When Shelby County Dive Team comes on a scene, whether it's on this end of the lake or on the other end of the lake within Moultrie County, everybody kind of takes a breath of relaxation knowing that Shelby County's there. Shelby County's there, and you guys can be counted on for the investment you've made. I have personally worked with the dive team on different trainings and numerous, numerous incidents. It's a very professional organization that should make the county proud. They do a tremendous job, not only for our county, but dive teams around this area are always looking up to the Shelby County Dive Team. There's been numerous, numerous incidents where, where in Moultrie County's end of the lake have called Shelby County in for the mutual assistance, and that call is why that person was recovered in a very, very timely manner. And I hope nobody in this room has had a family member or a friend that's needed that service. But I can tell you, if you do, you want the Shelby County Dive Team there, and you want Shelby County there. It's an outstanding group, and I appreciate what all you all have done to make this organization viable for the lake.
Thank you, John. Just for everybody, we do have public body comment rules that extend to a five-minute limit with yielding a maximum of ten minutes to any neighbor. And you're within two seconds, very good. Public body comment?
You guys have laid out an oversight committee. Who's the seats of that oversight committee?
The Public Safety Committee.
Yes.
And Don Tate. So we have Cody, Sunny, Julie, Teresa, Charlie, Lori, and Don Tate.
Thank you.
Public body comment, Mr. Finks?
I think I expressed from the whole group that what you've passed here makes sense, and we hope that you'll carry that same structure, or lack of significant structure, into the next resolution, whatever that is. You've taken away the paragraphs that I think people found most objectionable, and that's appreciated, and we just hope that that's the same principle and philosophy you'll carry in the next resolution that comes in the next sixty days. And I think, if anybody disagrees with me, that we want the dive team to have this independence that they are now getting, and the limited, minimal amount of supervision that they're getting. I think we all agree that's what we want to continue, and I express that. And if anybody disagrees, I'm sure they'll let you know.
Thank you all for what you have done. For twenty-three years, this team has been a part of Shelby County. We have held ourselves to a higher standard. Just like John said, when we show up, everybody takes that sigh early. It's not an easy feat to accomplish that. It's not an easy feat to have, right here, over a hundred and thirty years of experience. And if you didn't hear Terry earlier, the dive team, to start it, it takes a minimum of ten years to get functioning the way we function. I have one request. At Thursday night's board meeting, I walked up and I extended my hand to Mr. Ross, and he turned his back on me. Mr. Ross, are you prepared to step down from the safety committee? The Public Safety Committee, since that is going to be our oversight at this point? Mr. Orman, are you prepared to appoint somebody in Sunny's place to the Public Safety Committee? I'll wait for your answer.
Go ahead, Mr. Public Body Comment, because this is going to take time deliberation.
Moving forward with what I've been put through, what this team has been put through over the last three weeks, me three weeks, them two weeks, I don't know how we can move forward with the attitude and the temperament that Mr. Ross has shown.
Mr. Chairman, may I speak?
Sure.
My name is Scott Jepson. I'm the operations manager for the Shelby County Dive Team. I volunteered for the dive team for twenty-one years. During that time, I've been certified as an advanced open water diver with PADI, a public safety diver, Rescue One with PSD, a dive control specialist, a stress rescue diver with SSI, a diver technician with ERD One, a CRPR healthcare provider, first aid, emergency oxygen administrator for scuba diving injuries with DAN, as a provider of basic life support with CPR, AED for professional rescuers with American Red Cross, as an incident command system expert with FEMA. I list all these things, not to boast in my expertise, but to demonstrate to you our team's commitment and constant pursuit of excellence in the rescue techniques and strategies. I know there's no one here on the board that has any experience as a PSD, so let me enlighten you, if you will. Let me take a moment to describe to you what a dive call can be like. You're spending a Saturday at home with your family and your pager goes off. The report is of a fisherman who just witnessed his companion to... The report is of a fisherman who just witnessed his companion tumble overboard and not resurface. The boat is still at the location of the accident tied off to a tree. Sounds simple enough. Now imagine strapping on 70 pounds of scuba equipment and entering the black water. As you descend down this tree, you discover you must be in the honey hole because there is nothing but fishing wire, lures, and fishing hooks to entangle you. It takes you quite some time to get to the bottom of the lake, but now, woo-hoo, I made it. The tree itself, by the time you get to the bottom of the lake, is bigger diameter than the exceeding of your arms to reach around that tree. So at the bottom, you begin swimming a search pattern with only a rope to guide you that stretches up to a shore responder above. You get lucky. You find the victim and begin your ascent, climbing that tree at a safe pace so as not to injure yourself because you could come up with the bends if you come up too fast, but we're still facing all the fishing line, the fishing lure, and even the occasional anchor rope that's tied there. Breaking the surface of the water, you come face to face with death, the lifeless face of the fisherman staring you square in the eye as his bodily fluids begin to ooze out of his eyes, nose, and mouth. You reflect reflexes to let that man go, but oh God, I don't want to go down there again. That's when your teammate reaches over from the boat to help you recover the victim. You found the fisherman within the golden 60 minutes. Your teammates begin CPR. Meanwhile, you're still in the water, none from all that you've experienced on the lake that day. This scenario actually happened over 20 years ago to me and I remember it like it was yesterday. It was difficult and yet I have been humbled by family members of the victims who over the years still recognize me as part of the dive team that returned their loved ones to give them closure. This story also demonstrates the meaning of teamwork and what our teammates mean to us. We rely on each other. We have been where the others have gone. We will not sacrifice any member of this team. Because of the treatment of this volunteer organization has received, it is with a heavy heart, I hereby resign my position on the Shelby County dive team. I see no other option given the toxic environment created by this manufactured crisis. I apologize to the community, to whom I have proudly donated hundreds, if not thousands of hours through the years, providing emergency response on the lake, the rivers, farms, ponds, and flooded roadways. The accusations and half truths plastered on social media have cut deep and broken the trust between our team and this board. I leave here tonight with my head held high, knowing I have served to the best of my ability in a professional and compassionate manner.
Mr. Orme, can I speak? We just lost a good man.
We don't like you.
That's right, we don't.
My name is Nicholas Wick. I'm the third in command for the Shelby County dive team. To the citizens and members of the Shelby County Board, I am thankful for the amazing opportunity to serve this great community for over 11 years, with most of those being an administrative commander for the Shelby County dive team. I am saddened by the loss of a mentor and an asset, a friend who has served the team for 21 years, Mr. Shanks. This loss will be felt by the, excuse me, let me get my composure here. This loss will be felt for years to come by this team and this community. I personally have dedicated and spent hundreds, if not thousands of hours, a lot of my own money. I've sacrificed time with my family, my friends. I've missed holidays, birthdays, weddings, and other special events every year, anytime, day or night. At times, I've gone 36 hours without sleep. I spent a couple hours just to return to dive operations to go into work for eight to 12 hours. I have never asked for, nor would I accept dissent for this service. I felt it was a great honor to give peace to the families and help those in need throughout the year. This manufactured crisis and adversary role that has been taken by the team, dive team committee chairman, Sonny Ross, towards the leadership of the Shelby County dive team is disheartening. I am personally offended by the representatives of some of this board who have openly attacked and made derogatory comments and chose to use a motion to govern the organization, specifically the Shelby County dive team leadership decision made on June 21st, 2023. I am no longer feel that this committee and possibly this board stand behind me if a need were to arise. I believe if I speak out of line or stand my ground as a commander, I would end up the next example made. I will not volunteer my time and risk my life just to know that I have no support of the people that are supposed to be my leaders. Members of this board think this is acceptable to have another team cover calls 28 minutes away and therefore it's not considered an emergency. The first call they requested took no fault to the Moultrie County dive team, one hour and five minutes to arrive on scene. Politics were placed above public safety. This is not acceptable. I have read several press releases by Mr. Ross that state the dive team does not have proper insurance because they were not properly formed. Mr. Ross wants us to believe this is just a coincidence at 36 hours after being embarrassed or in his words attacked because the team showed up to support the commander. This just randomly came to light. Per Mr. Ross, the dive team had to be shut down due to lack of insurance and lack of formation paperwork for our protection. I am told the same documents are missing for the Shelby County rescue, yet they have been not ordered to stand down or issue is fixed. Why? Let me be clear, I am not now, nor would I ever ask another emergency service to stand down. Why is the same issue that was caused us to shut down, not them? You need to ask yourselves these questions. When did the request for insurance clarification take place by Mr. Ross? Insurance questions were asked and answered on a March 14th legislative committee. What changed? Did the new investigation into the dive team start June 21st? How does one board member get to stand down an entire emergency service? What's next? Disagree with the sheriff and stand down his department? How can this even happen without a board vote? I would like to state that I have complete confidence, respect, faith in the leadership skills, decisions, the ability of our commander, Austin Pritchard Jr. I stand behind him on any of his decisions, unlike members of this board. If a decision was made that did not align with your beliefs or opinions, it should have been discussed with the commander, not on social media or publicized with the Agger County watchdogs. Have a discussion like adults, change or remove language you disagree with, do not start a personal vendetta to get your way. This isn't a dictatorship, it's a democracy. As the administrative commander, I hereby officially render my immediate resignation as an apparent this board and its leaderships do not align with my own. A leader leads from the front and educates on the way. Thank you for the opportunity to humbly serve this community. God bless you all.
You are not wanted. Resign. Or will we lose more?
If you were them.
You were them.
They're going to keep coming.
Stop now.
They're still coming.
Step down.
Come on, Sonny, you're making it out yourself.
You're hurting our community.
Shame on you.
Step down. Do something about this, Mr. Orme.
What was that you said?
Can you please repeat that?
I said, if people threaten to quit, let them quit.
Really? Are you kidding? You got this, son. Get out of our community. You don't even live here.
You're not wanted. After a tenure of 23 years and an untarnished reputation serving Shelby County, I Scott Robert Ancoff hereby tender my resignation from Shelby County Dive Team. I'm not compelled to continue to volunteer given the current climate with the local county government. I am deeply saddened and feel forced to make this decision. It's been my pleasure serving the citizens and visitors of Shelby County alongside my teammates and command staff, which are all of the utmost quality. I would like to thank all the supporters of the dive team, of which there are many, for all that was provided for the team throughout the years.
Resign, Sonny. Resign.
All these people, that man is here. Everybody, all of them are not on the menu.
Save the team, save the team, please.
Save the team.
We resign. Bobby, do something.
We have enough.
Are you kidding? You're going to let them all do it? You're going to let them do it?
What is the matter with you?
What are you doing?
Major diver right here. Jordan Davis, currently dive six. I've been with the dive team for eight years. To the citizens of Shelby County, I've had the pleasure of serving you for over seven years. Being on this team has given me a sense of belonging in this community. However, tonight, I resign, officially resign my position on the Shelby County dive team effective immediately. It has been through the actions of select board members and broken trust within this board that I can no longer provide volunteer services to county, to this county and its great citizens. So it's with a heavy heart that I will say it has been an honor to serve my community and I will allocate my time in other areas outside the influence of this board. Thank you.
You have to do something. Bobby, you're sitting there, you let this go on. Chairman needs to step up. Unbelievable. Come on, Chairman.
I have public body comment here in the back row.
You're still not resigning, Bobby. Bobby, what do you want to do?
Mr. Chairman, my name is Sean Dial and I'm entering my resignation letter. Dear Shelby County Board, I am writing this letter to inform you of my decision to resign from the Shelby County dive team effective immediately. Over the past several months, the unprofessional attacks, social media messages, and conversations conducted from the head trustee and board members towards the commander and dive team members are unacceptable. An unfounded attack on one member is an attack on the entire team. It's for this reason I am no longer a member of this dive team. I'd like to take this moment to, I'd like to take this moment to thank the dive team members, especially the commander, for giving me the opportunity to be a part of such a strong and dedicated team.
Resign. Step down.
I resign.
This entire community.
They're destroying this. We aren't going to have a team left.
Clearly don't care.
Shame on you.
I hope you guys don't even want to rescue. Where's your first call in the meeting? Rescue.
Good Lord, what are you guys doing? What are you letting happen?
Do you have children that go in the water?
This is unbelievable. How can you let this happen?
Chris, we reinstated them.
How can you let this happen? They're asking you for him to stand down. Is he more important than the community?
I understand that they want him gone.
And he should go.
Let's wait until he's gone.
Brian Henzie, recently retired dive eight. My replacement will be up next. I left this county 30 days ago due to a personal situation for my family. I spent two decades on this team. If you notice, my shirt is not the same color as theirs. This is my commemorative shirt for retiring from this team. I was the man that was on the other end of the line when this guy was trapped in the ocean, in the river, and I heard his screams for help. I saw his safety diver sitting there with wide eyes. I gave hand signals to not upset this man and keep my voice calm. I was later told, not by him, but by another diver, it was my calmness and my voice that got him through that moment. Though I am not resigning, because I've already retired, I do not want this commemorative shirt in my closet to see how this board treated this group, a wonderful extended family of mine. That is a terrible reminder. I will take my good memories and I will keep them up here.
Permission to have a sword. To whom it may concern, I Kenneth Farley respectfully resign from Shelby County dive team due to some toxic and very unprofessional mannerisms from some of the current board members. It pains me to stand here in front of the community and read this letter to the public of Shelby County. Because the team and I have poured numerous hours being away from our families and friends to help this community in a dire time of need. It is sickening to sit by and watch the way most of this county board is handling themselves with this predicament that was created. I have always dreamt of wanting to help other people and communities ever since I was introduced to a volunteer emergency group at a very, at a very young age. And to have a county board crush a dream of mine all because of an issue that ceased to even exist, with that statement, I would strongly urge that Mr. Sonny Ross be removed from the county board due to his lack of professionalism and bullying mentality. To the public of Shelby County and surrounding counties that previously had a mutual aid agreement, I apologize for having to resign, but the faith and trust of the board as a whole is no longer there.
Resign. Please resign. Step down. Down now.
Do we have anybody left on the dive team, Sonny?
If you don't care. Please save the team, please.
I Kevin Spangler have served proudly on the Shelby County dive team for nine years, along with some of the best volunteers this county has to offer. I have served the United States of Americas in the Army stationed across the country and around the world serving in combat under the command of some of the best leadership the country has to offer. Some of the Shelby County board members have shown a lack of integrity, loyalty, respect, and honor to the Shelby County citizens and volunteers, first responders in the recent attacks towards the Shelby County dive team. It seems some select members of the board are ones who are running rogue in not the dive team. Today, I am putting in my resignation as a member of the Shelby County dive team. To the citizens of this great county, it was a pleasure serving you. Dive nine out.
Bobby, do something. Do what you know is right. You're going to be next. Do you care? Do you care?
No, he don't care.
Hello, my name is Sandy McCarron. I've had the pleasure and honor to serve on the county, Shelby County dive team as a shore responder and ENT, along with some of the most dedicated men and women. For the last 10 years, under the command of Austin Fisher and Scott Ancoff. During those years, we worked, trained, cried, laughed, and teased amongst each other, but more importantly, we became a family while respectfully serving the citizens of Shelby County and surrounding communities. Mr. Ross, I've seen on several occasions that you like to quote verses of scripture, so I have to ask, does it taste like vinegar when you speak them? I find it hard to believe that a man of faith can possess vindictiveness and spitefulness that has been clearly shown towards our dive team, our commander, our families. You seem to like to talk the talk, but clearly don't possess the ability to walk the block. You seem to like to talk the talk, but clearly don't possess the ability to walk the block. To the board, I hope you will soon come to realize how much experience and knowledge that's walking away tonight. The experience and knowledge that can't be gone out and brought back in to have a successful team immediately. It takes years to build a team and our team is hands down one of the best. Just ask our supporters behind us. As of tonight, I hereby offer up my resignation to the Shelby County Board from Shelby County Dive Team. So in parting, Mr. Ross, I have a quote scripture that I would like to share that is one of my favorites as it speaks to my heart and I'm sure the first responders that are here tonight with us. Then I heard the voice, then I heard the voice of the Lord saying, "Who shall be sent? And who will go for us?" And I said, "Here I am, send me." Mr. Ross, who do you want to send?
How does the board just sit there and let this happen?
Express your opinion.
No, you'll wear it forever.
Since ten days after I graduated high school, all I've done is give my life to everything, to service no matter where I'm at. I've done my country, I've done my community, I don't know, for the last twenty-some years. It pains me that we are led to this. I'd like to tender my resignation from the Shelby County Dive Team effective immediately.
Eight years in the military. Five active, three reserve. Been to places probably none of you would ever like to go to. Afghanistan. Flew in three days after Hurricane Katrina into that chaos. And this has been my family for the past seven years. And now, a single individual has destroyed this family. I'm Craig Martin, I submit my resignation to Shelby County Dive Team.
Way to go, board, way to go.
Okay, so I have this paper typed out, I ain't even made this work. This has just been ridiculous, man, this ain't high school. You guys could have done this shit a whole different way. I've been on since 2017. He's been, I mean like a second dash with me. And you guys have managed to piss it all the way, you know, manage it no matter three weeks. I think he needs to go. Forget, no questions asked, but as of tonight, I'm putting in my resignation.
Mr. Finks?
See what following those guys got you?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's obvious that what the citizenry here thinks should happen, I'm asking that Mr. Chairman, Mr. Ross and the whole board collectively consider, Mr. Ross has the ability to withdraw himself from this committee, not the board, just for this committee. What's the particular? In particular, why the interest in staying on the committee? It's obvious that Mr. Ross has chosen his self and his image and ego over the lives of three million people. He's made that choice right here. He can stop this, he can stop these resignations. I'm confident they all would come back. And Mr. Chairman, if you're, if Mr. Ross is not willing to make that decision, as you know, Mr. Chairman, you have the right to make committee reassignments. You can choose the safety of three million people right now. You can choose that. Yes, it'll irritate some people and some of us will get written up in social media, but it's the people, it's three million lives. And Mr. Ross is standing firm for his position at the expense of three million lives, that doesn't make sense. And to the board, you collectively can look to your chairman and look to Mr. Ross and express your feelings. If you agree with the citizenry that Mr. Ross should be reassigned to a different committee so the dive team can come back, you can certainly make that strong recommendation to Mr. Orman or to Mr. Ross personally. So we ask you as a citizenry, please speak individually and collectively, all of you board members. I don't think any of you are wanting to see what's happening here. I doubt any of you want this destruction. So please speak individually, collectively now. We'll stop and be silent. Speak individually and collectively to your chairman. Tell him that's what you want to happen. Tell Mr. Ross that's what you want to happen. I think that will have impact. I think that will give a strong possibility that we can rectify this mess and put the dive team back together. But you all need to sound off. You know what the citizens say. We need you to sound off. Mr. Orman can, as chairman, only listen and not act. He doesn't have to act, that's right. He doesn't have to do what we're requesting. Mr. Ross doesn't have to do what we're requesting. But if you all say that we have, we want this done as part of the leadership of the board, then that would have great impact. So please, no more resignations. Please, somebody there, some individual, some group, speak up.
Come on, Dave.
Please.
Please, please. Give a response, Mr. Finks. There's nothing on the agenda about any sort of committee adjustments or anything that matters. For me to do something, you say for me to do something, I'll timeout. I'm giving a response to the statements of Mr. Finks. As it stands currently, the board just passed a resolution that puts seven members of this board in an oversight position to work with the dive team. That's six other members. With that said, how many of those six members are fully coherent with the start and finish of the situation that started in January?
What situation do you think?
All of you.
So we have, we have a full committee that would encompass public safety and we have the knowledge base to work through it. Now, with that said, in the vote of the board, Mr. Ross also affirmatively voted for this resolution in support of the dive team and through that vote openly put forth the mentality that he's willing to work with the dive team.
Of course he did. He knows the name of the snake that started it by shutting it down when it wasn't legal. So of course he's back huddling out and wants to try to get the dive team on his side, but it's too late. It is way too late.
You can take her right now. All he's gotta do is get up and walk out the door.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, hopefully your board members might speak to you, give them, give you their thoughts.
Can I speak? I would just like to make a comment. Can I ask you, please, have you ever been through formal leadership training? I'm sorry. Yes, because you are the leader of this board. You can make a decision. Make a tough decision, that's what leaders do. If you want this man to step down, by God, tell him to step down. You just let however many dive members walk away and resign and put the lives of millions of people at risk. As a leader, you have to make tough decisions sometimes. And that includes asking Mr. Ross to step down. Sorry, that's my opinion. I've been through formal leadership training. I've made tough decisions. I've had to fire employees. You're the leader of this county board, make a tough decision.
What was your name?
Because if I give it, you know what's gonna happen? Your little watchdogs will come after me. Unfortunately, I prefer not to give my name because I'm an employee and I've learned what happens to employees when they speak up. The watchdogs come after them. I prefer not to give my name.
Hey, there is a, shouldn't be a floor.
Whistle law policy? You know how much faith I have in that? None. I don't want the watchdogs coming after me, so I prefer not to give my name. I'm sorry, I have no, no faith in this at this time. I have no faith, I still don't have faith that these watchdogs won't watch me walk out to my car and start harassing me. That's how much faith I have. I'm sorry.
I may have lost count of twelve. Give or take. To include Mark and his many years of service. So I didn't start off on the path for any of this to be resolved. Through some discussion, if that's what you want to call it, and even some compromise, we were able to come up with a document that could at least create the formation and put the dive team on a foot. The intent is to get them back to work. Now, I've never been a part of the process like this or a dive team, but I've been a member of the team. As a gentleman mentioned, twenty-nine years of military service, you tend to understand what this sense of family is for these folks. If you're not taking that in right now, you're missing something. If you're not taking in the fact that we just let twelve members walk out this door and our intent to put them back out to work on active duty as stated earlier, the boat has been missed. Now, we may not be able to take action tonight for their request, but we have the option to take action. We took action here in a best faith effort to make a compromise to fix the issues that were brought up in January. Those issues have been fixed. We have a sixty-day timeframe to try to get all the other regulations and the rules and the SOPs and the things tightened up together, and I don't think that'll take that long because there's no doubt that these things are put together well by our current command structure. Now, by my math, we still have some of the command structure in place. One. Now, we have a choice here and they have a choice on where this goes from here. But do not mistake what these folks are saying and what this team just did. Do not mistake it for people just wanting to quit. They don't want to quit. They did not come here to quit. They came here to continue to do their job. They still have an opinion and they still feel that they can't work with certain members. That needs to be addressed. It's our job as leaders to make sure that this happens one way or the other, right? Now, I can't, I can't force them to come back. I can only appeal to their senses, but we have actions to take before that's gonna happen. I don't know where this goes from here, but I do know that I'm not gonna go to bed tonight, sleep in any easier than I did yesterday. It's gonna be a very rough go for a few days. I don't think that these folks are gonna have any easier path. I just ask that you consider the recommendations that are put forth when we take some action to get these folks back to work.
Mr. Ross, I'll ask you one more time.
Speak, board, speak.
Speak.
Please.
Okay, I have been on this committee, this board, from the last board to this board. I have been on the dive team committee and been with these guys one Monday night every month since I've been on the board even. I was in hopes that what we did with this resolution would be enough to keep everybody together. I was fearful that it wouldn't be, but I was in hopes that it would. I hope that you are listening to what these people say and know how important this group of people are for this county. And you have an ability to do something. I'm not saying that he has to resign, but he doesn't have to be on this committee. And you have that authority to do that. And the other night, I was called upon to quit too because I was part of that committee too. If you guys all want me to leave public safety, I will leave too and you can have two new members. If that's what it takes to get it resolved, I will get off that committee too. But this needs to be resolved, it needs to be resolved now. Without these guys working.
I believe they've already said everything that I would want to say. I do want to say that Saturday night when they got the call, I was teared up because I'm thinking, there's somebody at the river that's gonna drown and we have nobody that can go down there. Every day since Saturday, I see these guys, I'm in tears because we don't have anybody that can help our county. Something can be done right now to get them back. We're gonna lose more people. We won't have a dive team. John Summers explained the whole thing perfectly and I thank you, John, for coming tonight. And I agree with Teresa. Remove Sonny from that committee. I think that's what will help. I was thankful that we got through this resolution, thought it was gonna work, you know. I was all for it, but that isn't, it wasn't enough. You can take care of it, Bobby.
I hear what they have said. We need a dive team and I can understand why they don't want to work whenever they've got, where they're not sure about the command structure and the people above them. But I think it's within your power, Bob, to go ahead and take him off of this, just this committee, you know. I think that's, that's well to have.
I hear you, I'm listening, honestly, I am.
Do it.
Now. Sorry, there is nothing I can do.
Would you guys give us a little bit of time to work through this? Bobby's saying he can't do it, let's not call him a liar. Let's not, let's, give us time, work with us. We really are trying in good faith to keep you guys together. We want to see us together. And before you all walk out and everything, please let us have some time to work this out. We've got you back, you can go back to work today. I understand what you're saying about Sonny. Maybe stuff does need to be done, but it can't be done tonight. So please, please, okay, you can step back, but you ain't gonna go tonight. Give us some time to work this out. And I think everybody's gonna be satisfied with what comes out of this. Please don't walk out in anger and give us some time. There's too much excitement here. You guys are too valuable to walk out. You know, you guys ain't gonna be replaced. You know you can't be replaced. Scott, you've been doing this as long as I've known you.
Twenty-three years.
Okay? I mean, give us some time. Don't walk out. We, we are trying to do this the right legal way. So please, Austin, don't give us time. Just take your guys and give us some time. Please.
All I have to do is resign.
So give us some time to work through this. And it will be worked out. That's all I got.
Austin, I'm, I don't, I publicize coming out. I'm supposed to speak to the board or the body or whatever. Austin, I have talked to you multiple times throughout this whole thing. And I have been honest with you. I have not kept anything from you. I have not lied to you.
Oh, my.
No, she has not. She has been great.
Can we please show respect? You've been amazing, Julie. You called me.
Yes. And I understand, and I have said it myself, as someone who works in a crisis situation, you have to depend one hundred percent on your leader. And I know these men feel to, they believe that you're their leader. I, I've, they've demonstrated that. I see it. But like Brett said, we took the first step tonight to try to fix the resolution so that you guys continue operating as you have. We, we respect that. We recognize the, the situation that we're in. And I am again asking that it's, it's a very hard thing to be standing in the limelight with all this pressure. I know. I mean, I, I'm watching. I see it. I feel it.
And that's what Austin's had.
I, I understand. I have reached out and talked to him about it.
But it's not been you.
But it is, because when you say the whole board, you're talking about all of us. Anyway, anyway, I'm asking you to, as I have extended grace to you, I'm asking you to extend that grace back to me and give us a little time to work this out where we're not in front of cameras, in front of angry mobs. I'm just asking. I can't say anything, right? I'm just asking for whatever time you can give us.
Julie, you have been fantastic. Say that right on record.
You have called me, but you did not do. The mental abuse and the anguish that has went on in my house, I know. I have sat quiet because I'm a quiet person. Um, I have been the only one standing next to him during phone calls. The only one that's heard it. I'm the only one that's seen him sleep two hours. I'm going to get up and turn over documents because somebody's digging for something else. It's felt like the witch hunt that everybody keeps talking about. That's what it's felt like. I don't know how county board works. But I know what's right. And I know what's not right. I have told him I will not live like this anymore. The whole team has lived like this. We're family. In my house, you know this. We've talked. This has nothing to do with you. You have been fantastic. You have been honest.
That's not fair.
I under, sometimes things aren't fair. What I should, what we just endured is not fair.
There's been three, there's been-
I understand that. This has to do with one person. And it's not removing him from the board. The interactions that I he's a volunteer. The interactions that I have witnessed. I'm the only one who witnessed them. I feel like I'm an honest person. There is no reason for me to make anything up. Over a decade of him leaving in the middle of the night and going for people and helping them and missing birthdays, all the things the rest of them did. That sacrifice was worth it. The last three weeks, smear campaign, the things that were posted about him. That was hard. Got a thick skin. This last week, these are people's lives. We have been in straight trauma. We have been clawing to keep our own faces above the water. We have children. We're not, this is not a game. It's about one thing. I'm not saying Austin's easiest guy to always get along with. He is a leader. He is firm. He is show, he has integrity. This all began because he followed the governing document that he had. I think we should be applauding that instead of attacking him for maybe some things aren't right. He did the best that he could. He said no ill intent. That's what this is about. There are so many board members I know have called him. They've checked in. Lots. A few of you have went way above and beyond, and our family will never forget that. They'll never forget that because you didn't have to. That's what this is about. One person cannot have this much power and abuse over all of these families and my children. That's what this is about.
Mr. Ross, I'll ask you one more time. Will you step down from the Public Safety Committee?
Please, Sonny, step down.
Please.
For the better of the community, step down, Sonny.
Please.
Do what's right.
Do what's right, man. It's a yes or no.
It's not a yes or no.
Sure it is.
Or your daughter.
Because of the amendments that were made tonight.
No.
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 The structure, command, everything is left intact. And the dive team was re, was left intact, functional. As long as you are still in the command spot, none of that changes. If you resign for a ground zero, there's been a tremendous amount of effort put-
You caused emotional distress to that family, and that family-
One at a time, please.
There has been a tremendous amount of effort put forth to bring a resolution, to bring this situation to resolve.
You can end it.
Oh, yeah, you step down.
There were insurance issues that- For tort immunity issues, problem that should have caused you, could have caused you significant harm. If anyone under your command would have been injured. I've expressed all of that to you.
It's too late for this. I have grown up in this community nearly all my life. I've spent countless hours and joined Lake Shelbyville and the Cascasco area. So naturally, when I had the opportunity to join the Shelby County Dive Team in two thousand nine, I jumped at the chance to serve the citizens of this county. For almost fifteen years, it has been my distinct honor and pleasure to serve Shelby County as a diver and ten years as the commander of the Shelby County Dive Team. Over the past couple of weeks, I have seen how individuals on this board no longer have the county's best interest at heart. They have manufactured this crisis with the dive team to further their narrative and their agenda. The team has over a hundred and thirty years of combined experience that is not something that can be replaced overnight. I cannot and will not ask this team to endure this toxic environment. I cannot and will not attempt to lead this team while being treated with the complete and utter disrespect I have seen over the past couple of weeks. It is for these reasons I tender my resignation as the commander of the Shelby County Dive Team effective immediately. This decision has not been made lightly. I have spent numerous hours contemplating my decision. To the citizens and taxpayers of this county, thank you for allowing me to serve for the past fifteen years.
My name is Brian Alshad. I've been Mulberry County Dive Team member for seven years. Since past. I've been Shelby County resident for the last four or five. What these guys have been through has been a ringer. You know, they, they do put, I can even go through, they go through a lot of training, a lot of hours, a lot of hard work on a volunteer basis. Whether it was a typo, a misunderstanding on the insurance deal to stand down, whatever happened there. Yeah. But we had an actual dive call where there was somebody in the water and they were told to stand down. Mulberry County had to respond from the other end of the lake. On a volunteer basis. Then you had the life of a Shelby County officer actually go in the water and make the recovery. Hypothetically. What if both of them, the diver or the, uh, the deputy and the victim died in that situation? They're not equipped for that kind of training at all. What do you think our, our finances would have been in the county? So gentleman over there is asking for time. Time is not what you have. What if somebody goes out right now, out on the lake right now, all of a sudden they're over the, over the edge of the boat? We ain't got a dive team. We gotta, are you going to have lives on your conscience? Or are you just going to sit there like a bump on a log? And not do anything? You're going to let a hundred and thirty years of experience go out the door?
Yep.
You know why they're so pissed off? Was because their reputation, somebody's, and two other lives were on the line and their hands were tied. And then they come to find out, well, guess what? They did have insurance. Yeah, they did. I guarantee you Mulberry County was covered to come down here on the same damn insurance. Same umbrella. Sorry. I just think you were wrong. And I think you need to resign.
So, an hour ago, we had a dive team. An hour ago, Sonny, or Austin stood up and asked Sonny to resign. That would have taken care of this whole situation.
Yep.
Yep.
An hour ago, we had a dive team. Sonny, if you would have had an ounce of
Integrity?
Integrity in this situation and comprehended what went on here, you would have stepped back and let this team do its job.
Absolutely.
It was right on the line, right in your lap. He put it in your lap before all this occurred. And all you had to do was be a man, have some integrity, step back for the good of our community, and let it go down. But no, as you said. And there's our dive team out in parking lot.
Way to go. Shame on you.
Yeah, shame on you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I understand your position about not being able to make committee reassignments now. I disagree, but I respect that's your position. What I think you can do is you can look, you are his, you are the leader of Mr. Ross on this board. You can look to Mr. Ross and you can say to Mr. Ross, as the leader whom he respects, you can say to him, "Mr. Ross, for the sake of the three million visitors to this lake and the people of the county, having heard the people speak, you can say to Mr. Ross, 'Mr. Ross, would you please agree to step down from this committee?'" You can do that. That doesn't take an agenda item. And so you have a choice too, Mr. Chairman. You can side with these people. You can side with the dive team. You can side with three million visitors to the lake. Or you can side with your friendship to Mr. Ross at the expense of all of the rest of those things. I don't think you want to do that. And to the board, I would say, you have the same option. I think you all understand what the right choice here is. And it's not sacrificing three million people, the people of the county and the dive team. I ask you collectively now, all of you speak, please, to your chairman, telling your chairman, "Mr. Chairman, we ask you collectively, as a board, that it is the right thing to do to ask Mr. Ross to, please step down now." You choose the people. You choose the three million visitors. You choose the dive team. If you spoke with one voice now to Mr. Chairman, if you spoke to him collectively with that opinion, I believe wholeheartedly that he would follow that recommendation from you and this issue would be done right now. Please, all of you speak.
Come on, Boris.
Speak.
Yes, Mr. Orman.
Will you ask him, Mr. Orman? Will you ask him to resign?
So, Philly Barron to Townsville. Um, when Mr. Ross responded earlier to Austin's comments, you made a comment that as long as he stayed as the leader of this group, then that resolution was in place. Does that mean that now that they have officially resigned, tendered their resignation, that if something were to happen that they came back, that this resolution is null and void? No, I just want to know. I, I hope you accidentally said something that you didn't intend.
I did not accidentally say anything I didn't intend. I chose my words very carefully. I begged the commander to remain intact. Because if we had one thread of anything intact, we could have built on that.
You're a broken thread.
And he chose to exit, so I don't know where that leaves it.
So I'm asking, is the resolution, as it's written right now, null and void based on their, their resignations?
As you spoke.
Because that was the, that was the impression that I got from what you said. So I'm just asking for clarification.
We have a resolution to, to establish a dive team.
They got a resolution.
They said they don't have one.
I know. People won't be quiet.
Let, let me ask you. I've been here. What was your response, Sonny?
We have a resolution that forms a dive team.
Correct.
The current leadership will not be the current leadership in the dive team.
Oh.
The reason people are talking over you is that you're not saying, "Well, I want to..." I quit. I mean, really, everybody in here wants to hear.
That's all you've got to do, man.
All of us want.
And, and when I quit one thing, when will you be happy?
Right now.
If you want to discuss-
So we can get our dive team back.
If you want to discuss bully tactics and bully mentality-
Like what you've been doing, like you've done to Austin all these weeks? That kind of bully tactics?
Yeah, look at the text you sent Austin.
See, I'll come back at you. I'm not, I'm not to rest these people. I don't care if watchdogs know who I am, where I work or anything. You don't intimidate me. But you sat there like a pompous ass while the whole dive team went out and did nothing. And you're the one that can't. And now you've put everybody that goes out on this lake in danger. Because you- You're so addicted to being right. You want to be right at all costs. Well, it just cost you everything. I hope, I hope that none of your family members go out on this lake and you need that dive team.
I hope there's not a call tonight.
Disgusting. Absolutely disgusting. And I'm ashamed even being here looking at any of you. To sit there and watch it go out.
They can't see me any better than that. I just want to know, all of you watched that group of men come to each other's support. I've not seen one of you or heard one of you support him. So why are you not supporting him if he's this great guy and he didn't make any wrong decisions? But he's treating this whole thing like it's his personal agenda. And he's not setting a good example for this young lady sitting here that looks up to him. I know I'm not called for, but, but, think about it. Think about it. Think about it.
I am thinking about it.
Yes, think about the good in this community. You can say anything you want.
Look, she's running. She's scared of you.
That make you feel good?
And you can't call her, go call a private meeting, it was disgusting. And then have him leave.
To resign. Resign.
We have public body comment. Public body comment is just that. It is a time for the public to comment. In that period of time, we don't have any actionable things we can do. We will take the public comment, digest it, and come back to task point. You know, we have this, we have this structure to rework.
All you have to do is ask him to sit down, Bobby. That's all you have to do.
And I'm not going to be responsive in this situation.
You should.
Well, you're the chairman, it's supposed to be.
That means that I've been given ultimatum on the spot.
That's what a leader gets.
And is that how government works, is an ultimatum on the spot?
You can be a leader.
His lives are in danger, possibly.
Side with the people.
I'm just gonna say, I would have stopped sooner. I ain't gonna stand behind Sonny.
What do you speak?
I have worked with Sonny hand in hand on multiple issues. And he puts in the effort, he puts in the time, he puts in the due diligence, he does all of that. And the dive team can talk about being a family and they are. And nobody wanted to see them walk out tonight. This board went into executive session to put something together to resolve the issue, to give another 60 days to put the proper SOPs and SOGs in place. And it didn't work. I think they came in tonight, they were gonna walk out no matter what this board did.
Wait, tell yourself.
There are things that have happened that he, that he cares.
Asshole.
For his faith to be questioned tonight, I think is sad. I don't think anybody in this room has the right to question the faith of anybody else. I think that's inappropriate. There are things that Sonny could have gone back and forth tit for tat in the open with Austin. That is not the appropriate way to handle it. He went to Austin. You've heard one side of the story, there's always a Paul Harvey. There were multiple conversations that were had with the state attorney. The state attorney is the. The state attorney is the legal counsel for this board. That is who we turn to when we are in question. There are other members sitting here tonight that were down in courtroom B in executive session that heard from our state attorney exactly why what needed to be done was done. Whether they're gonna speak up and admit it or not, I don't know. But I am. I have Sonny's back. I think he's a good man, I think he's a good father. He served his community as EMT firefighter, he served on dive and rescue previously. And I think the attacks on him are, um, over the top. Over the top. I'm entitled to it. It's over the top. I support Sonny Ross. So you ask why nobody on this board was standing up to say they supported? I'm telling you, I support Sonny Ross.
You would.
But you don't support the dive team.
I didn't say I did not support the dive team. Those words never came out. I never said I did not support the dive team.
But you didn't speak up to the dive team.
Resolution.
But you didn't bother to speak up when they were asking for the board to speak up to the dive team to convince them to stay. You sat there and kept quiet.
There are a lot of members on this board that didn't speak up.
Nobody spoke up.
There were members who spoke up and asked.
You got one? Sorry.
Give us back the recognition of the chair.
What happens if there's a call tonight? There's house votes. I mean, seriously, I won't sleep if I know somebody drowns out there tonight. That's awful. We have nothing. I mean, this is stupid. You let them all just walk out. Nobody said a word. I mean, you've got to think about it. How many people are out there right now on the lake? It's not funny. I live right by the lake. I don't like when I see all the emergency things go by. I get panic attacks. Somebody's gonna drown. Now I gotta sleep. All of us have to sleep tonight and think, pray to God that nobody drowns tonight or tomorrow morning. And these four guys have to drive, what, an hour and something to get all geared up to get down here and.
They don't have to come down to the lake.
Well, they really don't have to. It's awful. This is just awful. These are people's lives. I wouldn't be able to sleep if I was, I can't, I'm not even gonna be able to sleep and I'm not even on the board. This is just awful.
I was gonna remain silent until Mr. Ross made a comment that he put nobody in danger. I was the deputy that rescued this tuber on Saturday. I did not have to go in the water, but I chose to. Because there's not one deputy in this county that would look and just, well, we're just gonna wait. We didn't know if she had any kind of medical condition, if she was in any kind of danger. I'm not just gonna sit there and watch her in danger behind one of the biggest log jams that's on the river. I took the kayak. I went and got her. I had to get in the water and walk her upriver through a log jam in my duty gear. I did take my vest and my gun, everything, and I walked. I was scared shitless. Because at that moment, I realized I didn't have a life vest on. Kind of wondering what the heck am I doing here? How did I get put in this situation? But like I said, there's not one deputy, police officer, any kind of law enforcement that's not gonna sit there and watch somebody suffer. I have many other things I want to say, but for Mr. Ross to sit there and say that he didn't put anybody's lives in danger.
Amen, brother.
So I just have one question. You have to have a resignation, you have to make a motion, do all your crap, or whatever, to take him off. But could he have just stepped down? Sure.
Could he have said, "Yep, that's it, I'm out"? Could he have done that?
They did the other night for the final committee, they said.
But he chose not to. How much the stand-up guy, he really, really. He let them all walk out the door and didn't say a damn word. And he could have said, "I'm out. It's all yours, take it and run with it."
Such a good guy.
Made me proud. But he sat there, he was trapped shut and didn't say anything. When he could have solved the whole thing and just said, "I quit. I don't have to be a part of this committee. I'll go be a part of another committee and that's fine. He can go be a part of whatever committee he wants." But nobody here wanted him and he chose to stay. That's all I'm gonna say.
And you as the board, I'm sorry, I'm trying to speak, but you as the board, why would you want him on that committee? Why would you want him on the board at all? If the stand-up guy like that, I'm being very sarcastic, but why would you want him on any committee? If he's not willing to stand up for three million people, you've got the board outrage, I mean, the county, he's putting three million people at risk. And why would you want him on any committee? I sure wouldn't have wanted him on my team. I would be out of here. Why, why, who would want him on the team? I wouldn't. I'd be whispering in his ear saying, "Get the hell out of here, buddy. Run as fast as you can, but you're not a team player. You're gonna risk all these people's lives? Sorry. No integrity there. Probably gonna be fired tomorrow.
So that's my comment to the ones that agree with Sonny. I'm not gonna point out names, but I know that you have a daughter and you have very small grandchildren. If she goes out on the lake tomorrow with those grandbabies of yours and one of them happened to drown, are you still gonna have Sonny's back?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Amen.
That's to you, Martha. You have very small children in your family. So you don't give a shit about them.
I've been coming, are you? I've been coming to county board meetings for the last few months. And I've been begging for humanity, to show some humanity to people. And I read about the log in your eye and the sawdust last Thursday. I live in Windsor. Why am I coming to these board meetings? Because I watched humanity be destroyed in my hometown. And it's happening here. You're aware of this. And I think that as board members, this is one of the hardest things for me to have to do, is to come in here from Windsor, serving on a board where I served for almost five years. I loved it. I loved helping people. But it got so ugly that it, it just, the hatred in politics needs to stop. It needs to stop. And yes, I feel like, you know, I hate when people stand and ask for resignations because I've been in the position where it was Mr. Ross asking for my resignation. I've been in that position. And it hurts. Because in your hearts, you care a lot about people. I care about people. I did resign. My health was falling apart and I don't want to see anybody in the same boat. He could have stepped aside from the commission. He didn't need anybody to tell him to. He could have just done it. But he chose not to. And after standing up in my meeting for 10 straight months, asking for me to, I did, not because Mr. Ross asked me to, but because my health was destroyed. Now, people ask me, if I had to go back and make the same decision again that destroyed my life, and it did, I would say yes. I would make the same decision again. Because leadership is not something I believe he needs to be in. And we acted with legal advice and everything I watched over five years. Over five years. And I don't like to tear anybody down, no one. And I don't want to tear Mr. Ross down. But if you're gonna be in leadership and you don't care about people, you shouldn't be sitting there. Thank you.
Gentlemen.
State chair, please. Jim, I'd just like to reiterate what I said earlier and what Josh just got done saying. Sonny could have taken care of this an hour and 15 minutes ago. We would still have a dive team. And he chose not to. And it was just a no-brainer. If you're a leader, a man, you assess the situation, sometimes you gotta get out of the way. And he chose not to. He chose to set this. And this all could have been avoided an hour and 15 minutes ago. And we would have had time to.
Other body comment?
So, I got a question for clarity. Probably answered, maybe I missed it with all the promotion going on, because you cut the tension here. But, you know, with John and Kirk's website, we all play keyboard warriors. I'm guilty of it. Get called out, I don't care. On the insurance deal, was there or was there not insurance? Now, was it a verbiage issue? Because it was listed hazard? Is that why they didn't have insurance?
The defense attorney for the insurance company said it is highly arguable that there is no coverage for the dive team.
Okay. And this started when? Back in January?
The insurance or the.
I mean, I know it gets a lot of head shakes, and I know it's an idiot question, but if you just watch what the hell just took place. I'm not gonna say any more than what everybody else has, but I'm just asking.
The development papers, what we just did has never been intact.
That you can find?
That we can find. Therefore, since there's no installation, official installation in the county, the attorneys for the insurance company said, "There's no correlation and there is arguably no insurance." So that goes with liability insurance and tort immunitys. So tort immunitys is what protects everybody from being sued individually. That was gone or not recognized, I won't say gone, but it was not recognized. And that is the, what was it, last Tuesday? There was a planned event with Grand Hope Construction? Is that correct? Tuesday, Wednesday? Last week? Yes, I'm asking you.
Why are you asking me that question?
You're the chairman.
Okay, last Tuesday, there was a planned event with the Grand Hope Construction.
I don't know who that is.
So Monday, there was a dive meeting. Monday night is when that dive meeting happened. And when there's unsure, uncertainty of insurance and there is a planned event with unsure insurance, how can anybody knowingly, so Sonny and Teresa and whoever's on that committee knowingly allow any particular body to, that they, you know, sit on a board over or a committee over, allow that to continue knowingly that they probably don't have insurance? Whether they do or don't, it needs to be ironed out.
Totally agree with that. But I just, for the life of me, have a hard time of how in the heck did it go for 23 years?
That's a good question.
It's a million dollar question.
It is a very good question. And that's a question that I think we all need to leave alone. Because it draws in the foresight, the investigatory capabilities of everybody who's been involved. It's not worth going down that road. We have discovered issues, we need to resolve those issues and move forward.
Because the only reason I brought that up, Bobby, is just because it's so wishy-washy with all the the real in post that everybody can comment on. You know, it was listed hazard and we, you know, the question was asked, how did the rescue squad have insurance in the dive team? You know, somewhere, can't answer that. That document I gave Mr. Williams today, that was typed. I can't speak prior to my time on here, other than history that we found that was signed. So.
So the rescue's been brought up, correct, tonight you brought up, the rescue and the diver are completely different stacks of tort remedies. And that individual right there, that everybody wants to leave, knows the difference between the two.
I, I've been around this county for 45. I've been involved with Sonny, I know how he can be. It's a witch hunt, Bobby. Do I want the guy to step off the board? That's my opinion. But him just walking away from that committee, damn right he needs to. And I'll say it, just like I said the other night, it's pretty cowardly. Things could have been taken care of if we don't want to go down that road 23 years ago. Could have been taken care of January. Could have been taken 2022 whenever he come into office. Is that fair to point the finger at him or the rest of the board? Mr. Wallace put it out there, "Give us time." I get it. But you had time and it was tabled. Mr. Kraft foiled it three years ago. You were on that board three years ago. He asked for documentation and was not given it. Now, I'm not riding on the shirt tails of him because that definitely won't happen.
You know, I think we're in a pretty productive dialogue here. Because we're acknowledging that there was issues 23 years ago, three years ago, six months ago. And now we have the board member that picked up the issues and decided to start creating resolution. Versus the last 40 years, then nothing was done. With that said.
It was three months ago, it was something was put near front of your, on your desk and it was taken. It's sad that everything in this county has to come to this. When things start getting tough, then we start moving. I know this is not the named meeting for this. We're talking about the dive team. But we had the farm lane resolved, now things getting tough, you and Mr. Bennett stepped off the farm committee. Because things, I mean, same thing. You guys, done with it? I don't know your thoughts, but you're walking away from it. Same thing Sonny Ross should have. Times getting tough, walk away from it. Thank you. I know I went over my time.
I still don't think the question's been answered. The dive team wasn't officially formed.
The, the dive team wasn't officially formed. And it was mentioned earlier that the subcommittee then was not an officially recognized committee. Under what authority did that subcommittee tell the dive team to stand down? And how did they do that without notifying the rest of the board? If subcommittees are supposed to just bring issues to the full board?
So in reference to how any, any person can have any specific authority, it falls under the, the health and safety of the people and the county of tort, not tort immunity, but Dylan's rule. So if he willingly knows, if he openly knows of something that is potentially hazardous to the team or the county, there has to be something done.
Hazardous to the team and the county?
Or county. And I'm talking about any, any particular part of it. Whether it's physical harm or natural harm to either the team or the county. If any of that comes into play, then something has to be done. Otherwise, the individuals that openly know that there's a problem would be held just as liable.
And he could do that without bringing that to all the members of the county board? To have the dive team stand down?
Good question, but I'm not going to answer that point. I have a meeting, just coming back, back.
Okay. My name's Lynn Williams. I'm a former county board member for 10 years. I've been with the rescue squad and the dive team. I guess my question to all of you, it seems like, you know, it worked. There have been things that have went to the state's attorney on different items regarding the lake, drownings or things like that. But my question is, it seems like you guys, I see where you, you're wanting to fix something that wasn't broke. It has never been broken. These dive team and rescue squad members, I can't say how honored I'm even to be around them. And you guys, it, all you seem to do is you want to control everything. It's, it's all control. You don't need to control everything to make things work. Now, if there's language and dialect, we can go through this. But the way you handle this and knowingly about the insurance and getting emails prior to the meeting and voting to stand down, I don't agree with. And I'm, I'm very, very disappointed in all of you. Very disappointed. It's control.
Just real quick, I don't know how much time I have, Bobby, but the standout order was issued at seven, on 7/12/23 at 10, right after 10 o'clock. Chris Gallagher sent an email at 7:12, at 4:37. And I, I mean, I'm not an insurance expert by any stretch of the imagination, but that email, he's a senior VP for Gallagher, said that they're covered. That's, that's how I read it. That's, the text seemed pretty plain to me. So what I understand is if that order, the order seemed to come out before there was confirmation that there wasn't insurance. And I haven't heard any of the stuff that, I haven't seen any of the stuff that you're talking about, Bobby. But on 7/12, Chris says, yes, you're covered. Sonny writes back and says, what about this ultra hazardous stuff? And then Gallagher responds, I don't even know what you're, I'm paraphrasing, I'm sorry, but I don't know what you're talking about. You're covered. Can anybody shed any light on that to me? And why was that standout order issued before you had confirmation from Gallagher Insurance?
It's kind of where I was hitting. I was, I was curious.
So Bobby alluded to it earlier, but there, it threw that entire thread and the 21 emails.
I remember.
There wasn't, there was an opinion, if you will, from the legal counsel, the law firm, Something Inglis, I can't say the first word, but Something Inglis, that gave their opinion, as Bobby stated a while ago, that it could not be said that there was coverage. It's one, it's one thing if an agent says, you've got coverage per the terms and conditions of the policy. Per the terms and conditions of the policy is key. It's another thing when the legal counsel for the cooperative for which Shelby County is a part of says, it cannot be guaranteed you have coverage. The other issue that came up is not only the insurance, but is governmental immunity that Bobby has spoken to. If we know that that dive team was not properly established, the founding documents could not be provided. They're not properly established. In the event of a claim, any proven attorney is going to find that out. And any proven attorney is going to sue the county. They're going to sue every single member of that dive team as, as individuals. So if it's not properly established, the individual members of that dive team do not have the tort immunity through the county in the vicarious liability. So nobody wanted those people on that team to be at risk both for bodily harm and risk not being covered, but from financial harm and not having the backing of the county.
Okay, two questions then. The first of those, I apologize, is how did, I mean, what started this? Did, did we, did you, did you guys tell the insurance company, we can't find these founding documents? Did you know you couldn't find the founding documents? Did you go searching for an answer as opposed to actually trying to figure out whether they, whether they were actually covered? Did you need to do that? Or could you have resolved the resolution itself before you ever contacted the insurance company, knowing or being pretty sure that you were covered? And then you went digging in and say, hey, we don't think we're covered. Can you, can, let me ask you a series of questions to see whether this is the case. Could this have been resolved without any of this?
That was being attempted. But once it became public that the founding documents had not been found and it had been being worked on, I don't know, Jessica, maybe you know, Sonny left it. There, it had been being worked on. I'm pretty sure Austin was looking for them. I think Jessica was.
Mr. Steiner was looking for them.
Mr. Steiner, I mean, there were people that were looking for them and they could not be found.
Mr. Steiner found some stuff today.
That was not, that, and that document tonight from 1995, I believe, is the rescue squad. See, the rescue.
No, it's not. It's dive team. Read it.
Dive and rescue were originally put together.
Right, 1971, 1976 is when the dive team and rescue company got it.
And in 2000, dive and rescue split. And when they split, there are not proper founding documents for the dive team.
From my understanding, it wasn't like a split in entities. It was like, uh, camera. You brought it?
And it's my understanding, the documents that you presented at the legislative committee meeting tonight, the dive team is not currently following those, those procedures.
To an extent. They have current, that's what he.
Well, they're separate. If they're not following that, then they're separate entities that they needed to have.
Call it an adoption.
They needed to have their founding, their founding documents.
One more, quick question, because I'm sorry. I love to listen to you talk and you do a great job and you know all about this.
I don't know law.
Right. But the other thing, and I just, I lost my thought. Why wasn't, why weren't these, why weren't these emails of this information shared? Like, being fully transparent with the public to say, hey, we think we're covered. We do think that. But in abundance of caution, we think that it's probably a good idea at this point in time to stand down. Let's prepare everyone around us to make sure that we never find a, we're not putting anyone in danger. And we're not creating this situation. Where we're all at each other's throats and we're all yelling at each other. And we all think everyone's just the worst person in the world. Why, why, I mean, a little bit of like heads up, it's like, hey, here's all this information that we have. You know? And we want you guys to know that. We think, we think we're covered. And this is the information that we got. And we want you to know that. So while we prepare this, let's get all our ducks in a row, make sure everybody's safe. And then make sure that we can establish the dive team appropriately. Because when you don't do that, it looks like retaliation. And that's why everybody said that.
It was being worked on and the dive team had.
But there was no transference.
The, the reason that it happened, that the timing that it did was because there was a training that was scheduled.
It wasn't a training. It was a, a event that more like.
It was a training though. That's how they would find it. That's how Austin would find it. It was a training event. To not, to not say the training is actually kind of a disparage to Austin.
So it kind of goes back where.
It's still a training, Bobby. Like, characterizing that way is kind of taking a shot at Austin again. He's not even here. That's how they train. That's how, that's how they train.
We've taken both entities. You've taken both entities. They've been at the center of this and they're out.
And look, we're having a call.
And we're still talking about it.
But Bobby, that's where I was nipped, or Martha, you can clarify one. But so the way you stated it is it was a verbiage issue.
No, that's not what I said.
You, you had insurance coverage until you got here for a legal.
That's not what I said.
You just said.
I said it goes beyond just having insurance. Not only having insurance, the other part of the issue was the tort liability immunity, the governmental immunity.
Because it's the hazard.
No, because they weren't properly formed unit.
Tort immunity is statutory immunity. It has nothing to do with the liability. That's clearly over here.
So based on what you, your comment was earlier, you said that there's a liability in knowing that something is not correct and not doing something to remedy it. And that's why Sonny knew something was wrong and he took action to remedy it. Right? Is that paraphrasing correctly? So if, and if three years ago, someone foiled their insurance separately and it was not resolved, they didn't get the information and no one found the information, then aren't those people that were on the board at that time kind of on the hook there?
No, because the full board wasn't aware of the situation at that time.
But somebody was. Because somebody got the, the FOIA request.
That was in Austin. Austin handled, Austin in that interaction was.
But who did he go to to, to find out about the insurance?
There was no record of it.
He would have asked somebody, he would have asked somebody, right? To see if they were covered?
He could have gone to the state's attorney. He could have gone to any of the, I don't know, the clerk handling anything with insurance, the treasurer handling anything with insurance. I don't know. He could have gone to the officers that handle insurance, probably the treasurer. But I don't know if those conversations happened. I don't know.
Okay, I'm, I'm, again, ask me for clarity on that.
So I don't, the board at that time was unaware.
So I can listen to all this. Can we not find mutual ground? You know? Why, why do you say no? It's your way or no way?
Yes, they asked for Sonny's.
I, I understand that. But did you see what it got us?
Because he didn't do it.
This isn't her asking, this is just her listening.
I know. Okay. So I guess what I'm saying, we're deadlocked right now. So we conceded and said, here's a document that will, they would have been already reinstated. They chose not to.
They called for his resignation prior.
We had 60 days to work together. Then don't put the blame on me if something happens to the lake.
Oh, come on now.
There are law, you guys all sat there. You watched him walk out.
What did you see?
I was crying.
One more time, this is enough.
I'm saying, we've got to come together.
I asked you to speak when he was here. You're my representative.
I know. We've talked.
Yeah. And when I called you, you had no idea what I was talking about. You're like, I like social media, I don't know what you're talking about.
If nobody had Facebook, this would be a lot better.
That's your own platform.
And my life's pretty good.
Would you have stood down if they were asked you?
I'm not in that situation. So do not play me that way. Please. I'm saying we came with an alternative. It wasn't exactly what you wanted.
It's not me, it's not what I wanted. I didn't want anything, I, I want whatever they need to say.
I want the dive team.
And he needs to resign.
They can't work with Sonny. They can't work with Sonny.
I'm listening. No, I respect what you're saying. I just wish you would have, I wish you would have viewed and everybody else would have said it. Give him 20 seconds. It's not just Sonny on that team.
I said I would resign.
No, I, no, I'm saying.
I said I would.
You can't control that team.
Hey, Dave, I didn't know any of this. So don't throw me.
No, I'm not, I'm not.
I didn't know any of what was going on.
I ain't got Facebook. I can't. I can't redo it. So just, I'm saying we've got to get a dive team back. I can't control that.
You can ask him to resign.
Give me 60 days. So I'm going to generally speak with the public here. I think most of the public and the dive team was satisfied with resignation. It fell apart when Austin stepped up and asked for Sonny to step down. And Sonny stuck his nose in the air.
And laughed.
Smirked and shook his head no. That's where she fell apart. That's where the love sank. That's that one, that one incident right there. Would it, you guys still have a dive team in place? If he'd have stepped aside, we'd still have a dive team.
Sorry? Well firstly, I wanted to say I had the pleasure of attending the dive team informal committee. You might say the, I think it was last week or the week before. And it was very educational for all of us in attendance. Us of Jake's followers, as was noted and wear that title proudly, I would say. But anyway, all joking aside, Mr. Scott Nkofa, did I say that correctly? Okay. If I understand, he was the commander at one time and, and a very good one at that. I don't think anyone in this room would object to that. And, and he made a very interesting statement. He, he, he spoke to Teresa Bame over there. She represents rows one and two and does a hell of a job at it, by the way. He said to Teresa, he said, you're on this committee because you're an advocate for the dive team and the rescue squad. And then she, being the humble person she is, she accepted that. She didn't say, oh, yeah, yeah, this, that and the other. No. She said, expressed how deeply she cares about these two public safety services. And Bobby, something you said about recognizing the, the importance of, of knowing how these things work. She's been on the committee. And if I may make a recommendation, and I know it will go nowhere, I think the new chairwoman of the dive committee should be Teresa Bame. And I yield the remain, I yield the balance of my time to Mr. Finks if he needs it.
Just statement for the record, I don't want to, I'm not looking for a debate, but I'm familiar with these issues regarding tort immunity, ultra hazardous activity and the insurance coverage. I've been, I've done insurance defense for a number of years when I was much younger. I'm aware of these issues that you raise. It just needs to be said for the record that those, in my opinion, those are false issues, that they are not legitimate issues. Now, I understand people will disagree with me on that. But it just needs to be said, since that issue's been brought up, those are, in my opinion, false issues. The last email was from the senior vice president of, senior area vice president of Gallagher Insurance. That was the latest email in time. And that email copied all the other people who were in this, these discussions within the company. And that last email of July 12 said, I believe, and taking into account all the other questions that have been raised, you're covered. That was a legally binding statement that could be held in the court of law against the insurance company. So my position is, for a later debate, because I know there's many who disagree, there was no insurance issue ever once that last email came saying you're covered. And the tort immunity, ultra hazardous activity, those are non-issues. It's called sophistry. Lawyers like sophistry. We can make up an argument, but it can fall apart in your mouth just like sugar. It can disappear when you bite on it. So there's an argument, it's not legitimate. I just want that to be on the record, that's, that's been raised here tonight. I just want that to be on the record, that's, that's been raised here tonight.
Public body comment?
Yes. Sir. So, just like to, real quick, it's getting late enough, just like to respond to what Mr. Augen said. So, Mr. Finks asked his board, you know, at the time when Sonny was still sitting there, asked them numerously, consistently, kindly, if you have something to say, say it, now's the time, now, not sixty days, tonight. Because we're going to lose these guys. Mr. Mahal stood up, manned up, and gave his opinion. The rest of you, not so much. So.
Teresa said Carol did.
Okay, I, I apologize, and a couple other members.
And Tim.
But, and Tim, correct. I, I guess, Mr. Mahal's speech struck, struck with me because it was so poignant and good. But there were a lot of people on this board that sat there. And, so, that, that was the response I would like to make, you know, Dave, what, you said, what can I do? Well, I think Mr. Finks asked the board, begged the board, this is the time to come forward, and some did, and gave their opinions. And I just stick by what I said earlier, you know, we lost, we lost a great body because of one man, or one person, or that individual.
Public body comment? Public body comment?
I always say, I'm not going to say anything when I come, but I want to piggyback on what Chris said, that there's just a little human decency and a little bit of more compassion that you could use, rather than, I know Amy Pritchard, his wife, if her to stand up there in front of all of you and do that in tears, she would not, I mean, she's not an actress, she's, I mean, it's terrible. So if you can't understand, some of you, what they've been through and why they don't want to deal with him, it's so simple, and you get, everybody's making it so hard. It's a tight, it's a little committee, and I don't know, I don't, I don't understand it at all, not at all, when you saw all of them with their arms wrapped around each other. That you can't understand that maybe going forward in the future, maybe deal with people with a little more compassion when you're sending them a message, or, you know, thank you for your service, Austin, we're checking this out. Exactly what Chris said. Why does it have to be, you know, stand down, have to be so overbearing? It could have handled way differently, and you, we would not be here dealing with this. So I would really hope, moving forward, all of you would take something from that.
A minute and a half, fair enough. To this point, I wasn't going to say anything, but I will, because I've known Amy for years. She was my daughter's preschool teacher for two years. My daughter just graduated high school, so you could run that math together. For her to be this emboldened, as a shy, calm, collected person, says a lot, again, to this point, about what they've been through. Our jobs are not to make people's lives more difficult. Our jobs appear to be a little bit different than that, right? We're supposed to be above, right? If people try to drag us down with commentary, that's fine. Our job is to take the higher road. We are supposed to be the consummate professionals here. And I think, again, we need to revisit what we're doing for committee and leadership.
So, let us follow, we're going to speak. Earlier, some people might not have spoken, but just, just so you're aware, we're sitting here facing this way, and all we're hearing is people screaming, yelling different things. So in that environment, it's very possible that some people might not stand. Sonny did try to speak a little bit, and I really wanted to hear what he said, but I heard a bunch of people yelling at him, and he really was trying to speak. So, there's that too. But we had a really good closed session. We had a really good closed session. Came in, obviously, and had differences of opinion about the document. I mean, it's, it's no like surprise that Teresa and I don't agree with a lot of things, or I might have differences, all of us have differences of opinion, but we worked on the document. And we did, we did come together, and when we came in here, there was a spirit of, we're moving forward, and we're going to get this behind us. I am sorry, but I learned something really, really hard. I don't know everything. I had to go into that meeting and learn a lot of things, from our state's attorney, from, from Sonny, from different people. You guys, I'm sorry, but you don't have all the information all the time. And it does take the level of humility to say, I don't have all the information. I appreciate you, Clint, trying to get more information, and you, we discussed the document that you gave us. We discussed a lot of things, there's a lot of things that you just aren't ready to. And I know that that's hard, and we can't, we're not allowed to simply tell you everything. Because I want to tell you something. I'll tell you something that's very, very difficult to do. It's very, very difficult to try to fix something that's a problem. And at the same time, you're trying to fix it, not tarnish something further. So if you're trying to fix the dive team and some problems, and there are problems, there's lots of things we've not even talked about, that are issues that need addressed. That's all we want to do, is, is fix it and move forward. But we, to, to talk about them further, for Sonny to defend himself and to talk about some of these issues, would have further tarnished things, would have further made things look worse. And so, that's a very hard spot to be in. It's a very hard spot to be in. Some of you want to come talk to me about it, I won't, I won't talk about it here, but if you want to come talk about it, I'm glad to talk to you about it. I'll talk to anybody about anything. It was a very hard spot. He did try speaking. He did try finding some common ground. And when everybody's screaming for your resignation, and you just don't simply have all the information, there are some, there are some real concerns. Why don't we have a mutual aid agreement with, with the Illinois State Police? Why don't we have one? I mean, that's a really good question. We need to have a good relationship with the Illinois State Police. The Illinois State Police need to be able to, to work with Shelby County, especially with, with the dive team. You know, and there's, there's, there's lots of things like that, some of the vehicles, you know? There, there's, there's lots of things to deal with. Now, the document that you presented, that was brought in and we talked about, and was looked at, it's a good document. The problem with it was, is that it didn't get voted on, as far as Jessica and everybody has searched on and seen, it didn't get voted on at the full board. So it was never empowered or authorized. It might have been done at the committee level, but it never received its full power. The problem with the insurance, Mr. Finks, was, is that the attorney for that group said that this would probably definitely, it, it, there's something like that, it was so unclear, that it would definitely would have been litigated. It definitely would have been litigated. If somebody would have died, and I know nobody wants to, like, talk about that, but if somebody would, it would have been litigated. You, you would have, depending on who hired you, you, you would have litigated it that way. It was so unclear, that there was so much risk, and it just had to be dealt with. When we came out of that meeting, and all, we all agreed, and we all had a good meeting, I really thought, I saw in my mind, and I hoped, that when, when, when Austin came up here to the bar, that he was going to extend his hand to Sonny. I saw in my mind him doing that, because a couple people, Chris had said, and some other people had said, hey, you guys did the right thing, I thought he was coming up here to extend his hand to end this thing with him.
Showed that he was around.
Yes, he did, yes, he did. And you know what, if he would have extended his hand right there?
He still would have turned his nose on.
Well, then that would have been a different story, not one of them.
If it's going to be our dive team.
But, but, but here's the thing, you guys might not like, and, and not everything was done perfectly. Okay, not everything was done perfectly, no way. But Sonny was, was trying to do the right thing. Maybe, maybe, maybe it came off really, really bad, and, and the, and the relationship did get sour. We all understand that, okay? But, but he was, he was trying to do the right thing. I can tell you, I watched it. He was trying to do the right thing, he wasn't trying to pause any hard. And there are a group of people that elected him to represent their district.
He ran.
And, and, and we can't have a mob mentality that screams for somebody to resign, have an ultimatum, and have an entire group of people, say, if you don't resign, I am quitting. That is not the, the way, people might think that's the way the system works, but it's not a good way to, to run a system.
I, I assume you're talking to me because you're looking at me the whole time, but one, one thing I do want to bring up, Matt, is, it's, it's poor for us, or, not us, I'll speak for myself, it's poor for me to call my district people, and they absolutely know nothing about what's going on.
Sure.
Because I read on social media. So I want to ask questions. And it's kind of disheartening, I don't know, I've got to make some phone calls.
Yeah, and I appreciate all your input, Clint, it's been, it's been helpful.
I will, I will fight, whether it's right or wrong, or there was some, I mean, I hate to say this in the start of the whirlwind, but, you know, the accusations come out, everything gets deleted around here, thrown away. I went through the proper channels, because I held that position, not Austin's, but for the rescue squad. I seen those. It was history to me. There's a scrapbook that's four inches thick that Austin has. It's a scrapbook, but there's a lot of history in it. And I went through the proper channels of the current chief to ask him if I could go through the documents. He invited me, yes, I'll go with you. And that's how, it took some time, it took some labor. I sat over at the library, that's what directed me in the year, era. It's a wonderful place, a lot of you ought to try it.
Well, you brought us a document, that was helpful, but it, what it does is, is that also, it also helps clarify the fact that we are missing documentation, we are missing minutes, we're missing a full board approval.
Right, I get it, that's fair with us, because accusations come to you guys, if this is not legal, this is legal, but somewhere down the road, it just didn't get traded up inside. Two of them members, I'm still waiting on confirmation that one of them's still with us, but.
And I will just say this, if Sonny is, and I, and I heard all the screaming for resigning, okay? If Sonny is one member on a seven-member board, okay? With Don Tate as the chair, and input from the dive team, we're all sitting here because, because we participate in committees, that's a huge committee, first of all. And it looked, you guys might think Sonny went too far, but there's a possibility that this went too far. Okay, now, you can laugh all you want, but I sat here and listened, and it was quiet, and listened very carefully to all the screaming. Mob and, mob does not get what they want. That's not the way the country works. That's not the way this system works. He's one man in seven, but that wasn't enough. Every guy had to get up and throw their shirt on his ass, okay? And some of you say, well, you know, that's fine, that's good, well, that was all, that was, that was pre-planned.
So you're blaming the dive team?
I'm not blaming the dive team.
It's good.
I'm not, I'm not blaming the.
Whole can of worms.
You just don't.
That was.
That was dumb truth.
That, that was, yeah, Bobby, what time was that?
You're out of time.
Yeah.
But Clint, no, I.
Who cares about time? I mean, you're standing up, speaking to the public, I respect that.
Yeah, well.
I, I leaned over and told Austin, you know, whenever that resolution come out, I said, that might be for the best. I had no say into this. I'm just helping these guys fight for something.
Right.
It might be for the best, instead of one going rogue, you got seven.
That's a good group of people there, that's seven. And I think people forget that Sonny is an EMS guy.
No, I dealt with him for twenty years, I know what he's.
Right, well, he's, he, he cares a lot about, he cares a lot about this stuff. If you guys were all privy to the information, it would not be as clear as you think it is. The insurance is extremely unclear, I know Mr. Finks disagrees, that would have been litigated. We have no foundation documents. And that got fixed tonight. And so we thought, hey, we're heading in the right direction, but then had to go to this level of everybody screaming, calling for resignation. And I'm just saying, that's just not the way the process works, that's why he didn't step down.
You could have adopted the, the act itself a long time ago. It was a simple put it in the agenda, vote on it.
I, I agree with that.
Then you could have amended that and put this form in place later down the road, and kept these guys good.
I agree with that, but I have, Clint.
Stipulations of micromanaging is.
Clint, and now that I've, now that I've explained, like, kind of, we're having a conversation. Now that I've explained that Sonny has a whole group of people that he represents, that he ran to represent, he was going to be on a committee, he's one of seven people, all right? Taking all that into, you know, perspective, did the dive team have to trade his position? Did they have to have his position?
Not against.
They had to have it, okay?
It's a trust.
What's that?
It's a trust.
It's a trust issue?
Trust.
Okay, well, then it, they had to have this, they had to have it. They had to have this. There's three million people, I thought, on the lake. Am I pointing in the right direction? There's three million people on the lake, but they had to have that spot.
So it's a dive team's fault.
I, I don't think, I don't.
I, I think it's, I think it was a false, I think it was a false, I think it was a false, in a, in a, it just wasn't enough that all those things happened tonight. They just, there had to be more, I guess, and I'm just saying, that's why this, that's why this transition.
Mr. Summers put together one hell of a, yep, painted a picture of it.
He did. One minute. One minute, okay. So, you know, he, this gentleman here, this spoke said, you know, mob mentality, calling for his resignation, that's the problem, the dive team, ultimatum, bullying, whatever. The fact is, is that it was one man, the leader, Oscar Pritchard, asked that gentleman to step down, and his team was behind him because of what had transpired, and their loss of respect for that gentleman. And that was the ultimatum, that was, there was no, this crowd had nothing to do with what, what this dive team did or what Sonny did. But it was between those two men, and he asked him, my, my team and myself have lost confidence in this individual. If you'll step aside, we'll serve this community. If we have to serve you and answer to you, you saw the response, we're out of here. So it didn't have anything to do with people in this crowd and what they thought, one way or the other. This was the dive team's response to this gentleman's remaining on his seat, in my opinion.
So it's really interesting you bring up that point, because it's, you know, the commander and assistant commanders, we duly appointed by the board chair, which means that they would actually report to the board chair, not anyone individual board member.
That he gave them orders.
And this resolution takes that situation out and puts it on the entire committee. Anyway, public body comment? Jake?
I'm Jake Ola, I'm going to give a dive and rescue board meeting. And if, if Sonny ever did anything for the dive or rescue team, I have no idea what it was. And the last one I went to, not the last, but the previous one I went to, they suggested they would like to have, wondered if they could have some money from the ARPA fund. Well, Sonny's return was, he didn't even want to talk about the ARPA fund. He didn't want to help do anything. I would, if it was me, I was at those meetings, if it was me, and I was younger, I would not want to work for Sonny Ross or Matt Kipper, so.
Public body comment? Public body comment? Public body comment?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Jeremy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.